Well, thank you for joining the Bourbon County Commission Meeting, March 25th. Welcome everyone here, of course. Uh, come in and have a seat. All right, approval consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Somebody have the hay bids?
Uh, I don't, I bet Jennifer's got some hay bids, I bet you. Opening of public hay bids.
All right, we received one for Elm Creek, but I did actually get several inquiries after bid closed.
All right.
So...
Have a seat.
I don't know what those are for, this is the one for Elm Creek.
Native. I'm gonna let you do the natives.
Okay.
I'll do the 250. How are you, Eric?
Good, how are you?
I'm just pretty good.
So, for Elm Creek, a Joe Terry, Terry?
Terry.
A Joe Terry, um, sent a bid, uh, check, actually, for $500. I don't know, I don't know what we normally get.
Um, it was $3,000 last year.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
He, I will say, he did ask if he would consider doing like the City of Fort Scott does, and do a two-year bid, so that when hay is bad, they can try to make up for it, but...
How many acres is out there?
Oh, I'm thinking the year before, probably like 27, 28, the year before, but I don't remember. It's always been way up there.
It's always been a lot.
Yeah.
And it is, I will say, it is, it is written in the, um, the bid that I sent out, that you have the, um, authority to reject any and all bids.
Okay.
So, just throwing that out there.
Do we want to make a motion on each one of these individual, or what I'd suggest?
I guess I'd like to know how many acres is out there. Um, can you find it on this, Eric? I got Onyx at...
I'll probably find it on mine real quick.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Larry Martin, how are you?
Eric, while you're looking at them, are you gonna burn it this year?
We are doing that Wednesday. Weather permitting, but right now, the weather looks really good, we'll burn.
We'll burn it down, so you're all right.
Okay. I don't know how much is hayable, but I think we own 160, don't we? Of course, you gotta take the water and all that rock out of there, and the buildings, but...
Still can't find it. It's Hyattville. Where's it at from Hyattville?
Back to the north, about Hackberry.
Oh, there we go. Yeah. 303 acres.
Know what it is?
How many's at the old dump on Native Road?
That won't be... Is that it? I've seen that's it.
We own 300 acres.
Yeah, that looks like it.
More than I thought, more than I realized, yeah. That's not a very good bid.
But, I mean, I don't know how much is...
You're looking for the dump?
Hayable.
Yeah, 307.07, then part of it's the lake, so...
Yeah.
Can't tell you exactly how many acres are hayable.
Right, and the buildings, and lots, lots of big, big rocks.
Or a big, big rock.
Big, big rocks.
Do a lot of damage in a hurry.
So, how much on the Native Road bids?
Larry, what would be your guess, how much, how many acres are hayable out there? You go by there all the time.
Elm Creek?
Elm Creek?
What is it, half-section, less the lake, less the... I would say you wouldn't be able to hay a quarter of it, be my guess, because I would, I would...
Lot of rock.
I would hay if you could. There's rock, you get, you know, there's some hay there, I don't know what they get, 100 bales off of it, maybe? Last year. Joe get 100 off of it? 100 bales out of that.
Do we want to accept that, or...
You only got one bid for that, right?
Yeah. We're probably not gonna get a second one.
I didn't get other inquiries, like I said, after it had already closed.
Yeah, I understand. I'll make the motion to accept the $500 bid on Elm Creek, from a Mr. Joe Terry.
Terry?
Terry, T-I-R-R-I. Uh, if that is not enough, don't second it.
Do the other inquiries have dollar amounts?
No, nobody said, Lee. We were a little earlier this year with our bid process than we were last year. Last year, um, I think I was a little late on it, so, um, they just asked, and it had already, like, last Friday.
Gotcha. I think, I think we should probably give it to him, since he got his bid in.
Yeah, he did what he was supposed to.
Yeah, so...
I second it.
Okay. The motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is 250th Street hay bid, which would be our tower project out there, three acres, maybe? $50 bill from Joe Terry. That's low compared to last year, too, but it is what it is, so...
It's dry as we were last year.
Yeah.
He's the only one?
The only bid.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the bid for $50 for the 250th Street Tower property owned by Bourbon County, from Mr. Joseph Terry.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. All right, we've got two bids for the dump, the old dump, how much, how many acres is that?
Uh, there's like 21.6 and right at 23, but not all of it. I'd say you have about 20 acres total.
Okay.
15, 20 acres, somewhere there.
Wow, I'm not misreading this. So, one, we got a bid for Mr. Joseph Terry for $50, and we got another bid from Pat Murphy for $316. So, I make a motion to accept Pat Murphy's bid.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'm gonna put his checks back in here and give it to county clerk. Same way with the bid that we accepted.
Public comment section.
This is the one we accepted.
Thank you, Eric. Eric, would you give that to Justin, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Bo Casper.
Make sure the red light's on, please, Bo.
Where would it be here?
Yep.
That's the Biden, yeah.
All right, I'm pretty simple. Making sure I see the red button.
You have a floor.
For those of y'all that don't know me, I'm Bo Casper. Um, basically, I'm coming to you guys as a concerned citizen today. I'm not pointing fingers and not judging, but, so, it's in regards to the solar industrial farms that they're trying to, or that could be going in, is going in, I don't even know. Um, so, basically, I'm trying to find out, or I want to find out more about it, because for one, it's right up there by my house. Uh, for another, I'm gonna have to drive by it, and also look at it from my porch every day. But, the more important thing, other than just looking at it and seeing it with their eyes, I mean, is, do we know, and I'm sure you guys have been informed about it, because that's why you're sitting in those positions right there, is to look after Bourbon County, and see what's in our best interest, so, but, everything that I've tried to read, excuse me, read up on this, I could see the pros, and it seemed like it was coming just from, just from the businesses itself. But then, if I scrolled far enough down, I would kind of get into more scientific answers from talking from other environmentalists, or whatever, however they left their forums. Um, and such was as far as the water situation, if it's damaged, you know, having the lithium in it, and whatever else is in those battery packs, or the so, however it's formed, I don't really know, but I have seen or noticed that it was lithium was in there, there were some other heavy metals, which contained, and when it's new, we don't have no problem, and I totally agree with that. But, the hailstorms, um, you know, things that we, when they wear out, and they start leaking, where, I mean, a lot of that's right in the Mill Creek, um, area, right there, and so, when they do start leaking, what's the devastation factor to the surroundings, the environment, much less our cattle, our livestock, everything that's drinking out of those waters? Not so much our human take on that, because we, I mean, we purify that, we run it through filtration systems, however, but our animals, and then we're eating them, or however, I don't even know if it makes a difference there, but, I don't, and maybe those things have been looked at, but, um, you know, the wild animals, what, I mean, even, uh, do they put out a lot of noise, a lot of waves, I mean, do they, I've read some things were depending on certain animals, every, it's kind, it was kind of like a cold, how it was basically said, some of them may show symptoms, and in others, it don't affect. So, I was wondering on those long-term studies, which I don't think we can get too long, from what I've seen on the studies, because they haven't been around that long. Solar panels on houses have been around for quite a while, but from what I've seen, solar panels in the fields, or your industrial fields, um, you know, they haven't been around long enough to test anything, and then, what, what happens if a hailstorm comes? Do they have somebody come around and check? Check on them right away to make sure that we're not, and if so, I mean, great, I mean, we definitely, we need to, I feel like we need to have protocols, and we probably got them, I don't know, I don't know what they are, and I guess that's why I'm here, is to find out more information on those, and maybe I can't, maybe you guys cannot give them to me right now, because, I mean, you weren't prepared for me to come in, right before I walked in the door, but, you know, there's, I don't know, whatever this county has, 14,000 people, or 14,5, or whatever the exact number is, and it seems like to me that these whole, the grass ain't always greener on the other side episode, kind of feeling in between the lines here, because it's been pretty hush-hush. These deal, evidently, this deal's been going on for quite a while, or at least talking to certain landowners, and, and then, once everything got processed enough, the cat's out of the bag, well, then it's too late to say anything. And I feel like with, with as much as what these products, or this product could be this indu, I mean, it's basically an industrial park, basically, I mean, it's fields, eh, from what I've seen, EPA has it as hazardous. I mean, and we're putting out amongst our fields, at one time, asbestos was, was good, lead pipes was good, and we find out 50 years later, however many years, I don't know if 50's right, because it probably wasn't around when they started making it all, but I, we're seeing the effects of it now. And as far as for my kids go, um, I don't want, I may not have to see that repercussion, I may be, hopefully I live that long, but we, none of us know how long we're gonna be there, but, I just want to make sure that this is the right, right decision, and I know you guys do, too, um, that we need to go down. Um, and I know we're taking away, and it is the right of the landowner to decide what he wants to do with the land, as far as whether he runs cattle on it, or doesn't run cattle on it, but, and I don't know the scenarios with farm ground and all that stuff, but, I mean, Bourbon County's got a lot of ag going into this, too, that we're losing, and, I mean, I imagine, what's the protocol when they're gone? Do they stay there, you know, I mean, I imagine something's, somehow they gotta get rid of the waste that's in there. Um, like I said, there's probably a protocol, and we can answer later, or you can tell me what you know of this product here in a second, if you don't mind, I would greatly appreciate it, if you guys have anything in front of you, or around you, or what you know of. Um, then, so, another thing, I guess, part of my whole deal, so, we've got, so, talking around after we've been finding out that this is going on, or coming in, um, we've decided, we found some people that have been, and that's another thing, we've talked to other counties, why, and I understand that they were zoned, not, you know, they had zoning out there, and, and we don't, so I understand that, but they weren't, they weren't giving an inch to amend those zones neither, and they were, and why, why weren't they given an inch to amend those zones to make this fly? There's gotta be some, some reason why, and so, we were curious on why, and so, we've got some, we've been arranging some people to come in, and we're shooting for next week, I'm not sure if everything's in detail yet, but I know we'll definitely put it out there for everybody to hear about it, and not just select certain few's, but we've got some guys that have experience in this, in this field, this area, coming in to talk about the pros and cons of, um, these solar industrial farms, and, I don't know, and like I said, maybe you guys know what you need to know, um, not saying that, but I am asking that we temporally put a hold on where we're going with these panels, until we find some more out about them. Um, like I said, we've got that meeting coming up next week, I mean, we, there's, there's a lot to stake, and I don't want to say, and you guys don't either, but I throw this out there, Pitcher, Oklahoma is a prime example. I mean, I bet they didn't see that wasteland coming when, you know, they started everything, but I don't want to see, everything that we've all worked hard for, come to shambles, because we thought this was gonna be a great deal, but we didn't get enough of the right information from the right parties. And so, in regards to this, I'm asking, we temporarily put these, put this on hold until maybe more information's gathered. Other than that, um, thank you for letting me speak up here, guys.
Thank you, thank you.
Nelson, you want a comment, if you want to comment?
Well, my comment is, the sad thing is, people are doing this, Bo, because a lot of people are leasing their land out, because their kids have left, or their kids aren't showing any interest in farming, and this is, they view this as the only way to keep their farm, you know what I mean, it's like, because they're too old to work on it, and they want revenue, they want it to make revenue, so that's kind of an easy out. And these people, these companies are going around, I, the one that we signed with is not the only one, there's at least others, I know, because we've gotten stuff, my family's got stuff in the mail, of wanting to lease out, phone calls and all of this, and I know several people in our area have, um, and we have not, and for the record, I know there are people with the last name Blythe, that have leased out land to solar companies, but none in my direct family, and none that I have any, no land that I have any direct interest in whatsoever, has solar panels on it, and I don't, I'm against that personally, for our property, but I don't know, I don't know how to go about stopping it, when there's several people that have already le, signed leases, you know, and it's their choice, yeah.
You can finish, I just...
No, that's, I mean, I don't really know how to go about putting a stop to it, when there's, there's private citizens of Bourbon County that have currently got signed leases with different companies.
Sure.
And they actually, they actually have land leased before they ever come to us, you know?
Right, that, sure, they were talking to them before...
Yeah.
They come, that way they kind of get their ducks in a row.
But as far as the, I mean, I don't, I can't dispute you on any of the other concerns, I, you could be absolutely right.
Which, and, and I do not know anything about this right here when I say this, so, you guys might put me right in the place real fast, because I'm just a hillbilly when I talk to the tar, but isn't there something of a Kansas Home Rule, or isn't Kansas in the Home Rule deal, or the state of the Home Rule?
Yes.
How does that tie into anything?
Well, I don't think it would tie in, and this, because from my understanding, it's very limited understanding, that would come into place where we, as a county government, decide how, um, to operate our own thing, but I don't think that does really infringe on property rights, which this is essentially a property rights issue, because we, we don't, I don't think we want to be stepping in and saying, hey, you can't build this on your land.
Not even if it's hazardous, though, that's what I mean, because then it's, I, right, nobody knows yet, I agree with that.
Yeah.
And, but then, that's why I'm saying temporarily, until we find out the exact pros and cons to it. If it's not putting out anything, you know, any hazardous waste or anything, and they prove, and you guys still go on, I mean, hey, we gotta look at that.
Because these, these companies, they have representatives that come, and they'll, they'll tell you all kinds of stuff, how safe it is.
Right, it would have to be a third party, or somebody no connection that gives, sure, no, I agree totally with what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm at a loss for this issue, because...
Well, number one, we're a county, and a year or so ago, we signed a resolution that you're entitled to do what you want with your property.
Right.
County commissioners would just not get involved on personal property rights, number one. Number two, uh, we don't have any zoning, as you mentioned, we don't even have the basics special use permit. I don't know of any legal avenue we could take to even put this on hold, even though we might want to.
Right.
I don't know of any way we can legally do that.
I mean, one thing that we could, as far as I know, we could do, is next time a solar company comes with a contract, we could put way more strict setbacks for people's property lines. I mean, I, I'll be honest, I didn't look into what an appropriate setback would be, I just kind of, industry, industry standard, kind of went with that. I mean, in the future, we could, you know, double or triple that.
And that's vague, too, because depending on where you look, from what I was trying to figure out, was some of them showed X amount, and then others was saying it needed to be further, so, I, and that's why I say I don't know what the right, the depth is, but, I mean, just kind of, because like the run, for example, like the runoff, you're right, that's my neighbor's land right there, but if I'm downwind of him, or downwater from him, and something happens, now that's affecting me and my livestock, you know, and so, that's kind of where I'm...
And the problem with what Nelson just mentioned is, legally, technically, they don't have to come see us first. They don't, they haven't done, they haven't come to us first, we know about it after the fact also.
They don't have to come to us at all.
So, you guys are like, basically like I am, as far as just finding out, coming late to the ball with it.
Now, if there's some hazardous concerns, I would recommend getting a Kansas Department Health Environment involved.
Right.
Get them involved in your project, let them review it, because those are the boys that reviews hazardous waste.
Sure.
And if there's an opportunity for hazardous waste there, I think they'll get involved.
Is this something that you guys can help us out in finding, getting us in touch with the right people?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And that'd be great.
For instance, there was a feedlot went in South Town not too long ago, and people in the area complained. Well, we got stayed in there, and they done everything by the book, everything's legal, and we just told you, sorry, that's the way the law reads, so, yeah, well, I'll get you some phone numbers and people you can call and contact, and get them involved, and if there's an opportunity that it could contaminate your property, they need to get involved.
Right.
And I wish we could get more involved, but we're, our hands are tied as same as yours.
Sure, no, I understand. No, I understand totally.
I mean, and, and you mentioned earlier that sometimes it seems hush-hush, I mean, it probably is a little bit hush-hush, because no one's wanting to advertise what, how, if they're leasing out, because it is unpopular, it can be unpopular, and they don't want the friction with their neighbors. Now, I, I think it would be nice and reasonable, if, if you were a landowner gonna do that, you would talk to your neighbor, and maybe you guys could negotiate setbacks, or something like that, rather than, I do see how it's extremely upsetting to all of a sudden, oh, by the way, I surround you on three sides, and we're having solar panels now.
Right.
But, yeah, so...
I might have a phone number here, I'll look, if not, I'll get you one.
Where are you having this talk at, Bo? You said you're having a...
Uh, I believe we're gonna have it at the livestock, we just got livestock there, and I'm, I know, I don't know, we haven't pegged it down, I think last I'd heard, we were kind of looking at Wednesday, next Wednesday, I believe, but that wasn't 100% sure yet. Um, and when, when we find out, I mean, I'll, we'll get it posted, I'll even put it on the radio and stuff, I mean, we'll get it out there where everybody can hear it, and kind of get the most information we can on both sides of it, and see, see just how it fits, for sure.
Yeah, I don't, I mean...
You're pretty close to Lynn County, so have you been in contact with...
Yes, and that was kind of, with, with them, and then even Douglas County, you know, they, they went through it there, and we've been kind of in touch with them a little bit, and it kind of just touched base, but, but, like I said, both of those were already, they were zoned.
Yeah.
And so, it came down to amending what was zoned, and nobody was biting on it, but it sounded like, I mean, I don't know that 100% sure, but nothing, you know, they were able to be successful there, but I don't know why.
Jason Schultz.
KDHE, start with him, please.
Okay.
They don't work with me. If you don't get where you need to go, give me a call, would you?
Sounds good.
My number's on the other side.
Okay, thank you, guys.
We'll help all we can.
Thank you.
Okay. I got approached late last week by a friend of mine who's on the Sales Tax Committee, I guess is what you'd say, for healthcare, and first, asked me what my thoughts were on it, and B, if they were positive, if I might be willing to help spread the cause, spread the word, organize maybe a little in, in the Uniontown area, and, um, that kind of got my brain turning, and I led me to a question that I think I have to ask you, and probably Justin, if he's here. Um, I, uh, first off, I want to say, I am, if we can get a good ER provider locked in, then I'm, I think it's a no-brainer to do a quarter of a cent, um, not just from the sales tax, or sales tax, not just from the healthcare side, but I, I don't think we, as a county, are ready for the economic impact not having an ER would have. Um, I, I've, I tried this weekend thinking of any county or city around here, or one that I know of, that doesn't have an ER, that even has so much as a Walmart, and I couldn't think of one. Um, so, but my question was this, the, I'm assuming any ER would go into the hospital building, correct? And the hospital building is owned by Legacy Healthcare, right? Um, and I'm hesitant to ask this, because I don't want to feed into a bunch of doomsaying or negative stuff online or elsewhere, but I think it does need asked. Legacy is a pretty young startup in the healthcare field, and the world of healthcare startups is, the survival rate is not great. So, my question is, coming from an IT background, we, we always have to have a disaster recovery plan, think of the worst-case scenario and what you can do to mitigate that. So, um, say, a year from now, this passes, we've got an ER, possibly we even have REH designation, if something on the business side of Legacy were to go bad, if they, you know, it, part of the nature of a startup is, they don't always last, they don't all last, if they went out of business, or even had Chapter 11, is there any chance that the ownership of that building would then in any way go into limbo, or would it revert straight back to the county?
Well, I mean, Justin, Legacy has got...
So, I thought that it doesn't necessarily have to be that building, I mean, there's nothing...
It doesn't, I mean, you'd have to provide them a building, but, I mean, Legacy Health isn't the one operating the emergency room.
Right.
They're literally just the state, a...
Basically, the landlord.
Yeah.
Is, but is there, if...
So, they're, they're backed by a multimillion-dollar company.
Right, but if something, God forbid, happened to them, is there any way that...
If they're a property management company, they're not, they're healthcare, it's just like they're paying rent, they're...
They're, yeah, they're just a real estate development company.
So, there's, if, if something were, worst-case scenario to happen to them, would the building flip back to Bourbon County's ownership, or...
Within, there's a five-year clawback.
Five-year clawback, okay.
And so, the, the money, the money, the part of the money clawback is diminishing by every year, when it goes down, up to five years, the amount of money they give back to us goes down every year, but outside of that, there's a five-year clawback.
Okay, okay.
So, as of October of last year, it started, it makes financial, it would make... So as of October of last year, it started, it makes financial, it would make, not very good financial sense on their part to give it back to us because they have to.
Right, right.
Put a lot of money into it and, yeah.
Okay, that answers my question.
Another benefit next is Bourbon County owns the equipment.
Right, and I meant to mention that because it sounded like they were donated directly to us. So if at some point we did have to find another building, we've at least got the equipment, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Who's next?
I, I want to, I want to expand on that. Finding another building, you can't just put a hospital in here. So, so you can't just put a hospital in the old, I mean, in a, in a old Walmart. You, you know, you just, you know, I mean, CHC had to spend $7 million on the price shopper to get it up to standards for a healthcare facility. So I, I can see it already on the internet.
I know, and that was my, that was my.
And, oh, well, just build a, just build a metal building. Well, you can't do that.
Right, right.
I mean, it is, you're talking 500 to $1,000, you know, square foot stuff.
Right.
So anyway, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Nick. Who's next, Chris?
Michael.
Michael Oates, you have the floor, sir.
And now to another topic. I only have questions. Refer you to, uh, the Tribune on the March the 20th. And there was a statement made by the business, the director of business operations at the community college that they had a windfall of $70,000 because the county officials had discovered during their reconciliation process. She said apparently some TIF funds had not been allocated correctly. Do you guys know what TIFs they would be talking about?
NRP, I don't, had nothing to do with a TIF as far as I know, Michael.
So, so what do you, what did you say before that?
Was it NRP program?
Oh, it's the NRP program that the.
Yeah, I don't think it had anything to do with the TIF.
Okay, well, I'm just quoting from the paper.
Yeah, I think that was, I mean, I. Yeah, I think she, yeah, that was, that's not, yeah, that is not, the county didn't make that quote. Somebody else did and I'm pretty sure that, I mean, we had talked about, we already talked about this two, two weeks ago and we had stated that it was from an, a mistake in the NRP. So is that correct, Patty?
What, it was a TIF fund.
It was a TIF fund.
It was a TIF fund that was set up several years ago.
Oh, there you go.
And it was, this account was set up and we were not aware there was money going in there.
Well, where, where was it coming from?
From taxes.
But, but where? I mean, for what purpose?
Well, because if the TIF had went ahead and went through, what happened? The TIF didn't go through. And so it was set up like it did, so this money went into that fund. So we distributed it just like it would have been distributed all along.
But is, is the TIF funds a sales tax or a property tax?
It's a property tax.
So you have documentation of that TIF?
Oh, definitely, yes.
I would like to, okay, I didn't know what to ask for.
I was told it was an NRP, so I don't know, I didn't know that it was a TIF.
How many years ago, Patty?
How, when it was set up, I think in 15, yeah.
So I just sent a court request to you?
Yeah, that would be fine.
That'd be fine.
Yes, yes, we'll send your paperwork.
Okay.
But that's what it was. And so everybody that was in, within that distribution district got money from it.
I wasn't in there, I guess.
I wasn't either, but the sheriff, that's what I think you guys used that money last week.
Well, that's what, now that's my next question.
Okay.
We're going to come to, uh, Susan indicated that we were getting a third ARPA payment this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I, I'll have to go to the videotape, but, uh, it was mentioned ARPA to pay for the sheriff's vehicle that was wrecked.
That was this money out of the TIF fund. That was their sheriff's.
So we're just calling it all sorts of things.
No, it's TIF, definitely.
The money that referred to the sheriff's vehicle was ARPA money that RIT department put backwards of equipment.
Oh, so I'm not aware of that.
I think, I think that is, I think it was old ARPA money that was going to be spent on something we chose to do.
But just because we chose, we still have to comply with the ARPA funding requirements, which are, two of them were COVID related, one of them was water and the other was wifi. I don't think any of them included a sheriff's vehicle.
I would probably argue that, but anyway.
I, I thought emergency.
I mean, anything emergency management you can.
I, uh, I would, I guess we'll find that out at an audit, but.
And what I'm thinking is I might have confused that with last week, that money you took for salaries. Did that what come out of the TIF fund? Yeah, okay, for the sheriff's department, that's what it was, I'm sorry.
Okay, so not the, not the police car, but salaries funds, okay.
Yeah, but that was money that was in that TIF fund, that was the sheriff's money that we just distributed it out.
Okay, do you recall who, who all got money, just?
Uh, I can get you the list, yeah.
All right, I'll just send you a court.
To the list, yes.
Okay.
That'll, that has on whoever, but whoever was in that TIF district that was distributed out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. That it, public?
Yes.
Clear as mud. Okay, County Clerk, Jennifer Hawkins, please.
Okay, so I've had a few questions on if we are going to have an early election for the retailer sales tax question. Um, we normally do about a week, um, so I wanted to come to you since, um, I guess you'll be funding this. It's approximately $1,500 for one week of early voting. So I just wanted to let you know the amount and then you can decide and give me some guidance on what we're going to do. That way I can get advertised and posted.
Did we do it last time?
We do for every, every election that I know of, um, we, we always do early voting.
Jennifer, I believe that we should do whatever we did for the presidential primary or any normal election. We should do whatever we normally do.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
I know that citizens really like it, um, we always run a Saturday or we've been running Saturday so that they can come in, um, if they are unable to while the courthouse is open or, um.
Same application, give everyone an opportunity to vote.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double check.
And so there's going to be no primary elections, is that right?
Uh, so there will, no, there'll be a primary in August, um, with everybody on there and then the general will be in November.
Okay.
Primary being August, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Do you want to take a comment, guys in the audience?
I just have a question. When will the voter registration deadline be for that election?
I don't know that date off the top of my head, but I will, um, I will double check and we'll get that, get that notice advertised and everything like that.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, so my next is, um, for the re-issuance of a water pollution control permit for the city of Bronson, we received a notice from KDHE. Um, this is a public notice that is available in our office and will be until April 20th. If anybody has any questions or concerns, they can come in and we can get you in contact with the appropriate division of KDHE for any questions, comments, or complaints.
Do you have that just renewed or existing?
It's just a renewal, absolutely.
Okay.
That's not in this county.
Yeah.
It's renewing a facility that's not in this county.
It's for the city of Bronson.
Yeah, but I mean, the, the facility that it is, isn't it mentioning is a different one? Oh, never mind.
There's, there's several.
Several on there, yeah, 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 never mind.
Okay.
Okay.
So moving along, I have a real property relief application for Sean and Kim Kokoski. Um, their house at 928 Osborne was destroyed by a fire in February of 2023. They would like to do an abatement on those.
I make a motion that we, uh, do this real property relief application uh, for the property located at 928 South Osborne, Fort Scott, Kansas, uh, February, uh, as spoken by the clerk, the February date that Jennifer used.
Second.
See it on here, Sean.
And a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, since the quarter is coming to an end, um, I just wanted to touch on the contingency funds. Um, we had the three in there from last year. You've already decided on the soil conservation district, so that leaves $10,000 for the fair board and $25,800 for Bourbon County senior citizens, so.
You gentlemen, if I'm correct, remember wrong, I think we had that discussion. If they agree to have a board member on their board to represent the county, we was good with that.
Yeah.
And I visit with both boards and they are okay with that.
They said that's fine.
Yeah, they said, send us somebody, so.
Okay, we just wanted to, um, to verify and so we can get these, get these businesses the money that they rely on. So we'll go ahead and get that processed and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the financial report. Okay.
Hey, Eric.
Eric Bailey.
Who do you want in?
Uh, the three, myself and Justin.
Okay, how long, five minutes?
Five minutes, fine.
Make a motion to go into executive session, case A 75-4319B1 to discuss personal matters of individual non-elected personnel to protect their privacy. B3 commissioners Eric Bailey and Justin Meeks, we're turned here at six, make it six 16.
Second.
And a motion, second, any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to resume normal session, no action.
Second.
And a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye, give me one second, Justin, I want to speak to you.
Sure. Mr. Walker and Mrs. Walker, how are you folks? I didn't get a chance to speak to you when you, you snuck in the corner there. I'm, I'm doing great.
This is our normal spot, we're hiding back here.
You're hiding well, too. I'm doing well, I have a, in about a week, I have a trip planned, my grandson's fishing, so it's good.
Soon he comes back, yeah.
Yeah, I need to talk to you.
Okay.
Sorry.
Excuse me.
My name is Jenny.
Jenny, okay.
Yes.
Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, it's great to be here.
Yeah, I'll try to get with you and the county councillor afterwards.
Fantastic, I appreciate it.
Yeah. How'd you drive down?
Oh, you rain showers, and the outcome is beautiful.
She would like to be on the agenda, so I'm gonna ask about the maybe agenda.
Yeah.
So.
My initial request is only gonna be for a two-minute exec, three-minute executive session with the three commissioners and myself. I'll have a discussion and then come back out and ask for another executive session for the same reasons. It's a personnel issue, non-elected, identifiable, job performance, three minutes, three commissioners and myself. The next one will be Eric, three commissioners and myself.
Make a motion to go into executive session, KSAS 75-43-19B1, B3 commissioners and Justin Meeks. We will, for three minutes, we'll return here at?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, six twenty-two.
Second.
And a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.